Good afternoon. I call to order the Board of County Commissioners Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, Business Meeting. Would you please all stand and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. We are both in person in the hearing room and live online. We do have a quorum. Commissioner Thomas and myself, Commissioner Partridge, are present. And joining us online from Washington, D.C. is Commissioner Abe Leyden. Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Partridge and Commissioner Thomas.
Very well. And Mr. Engels, online. We have certification of our agenda today.
Yes, sir, we do, Mr. Chair. My office has reviewed all items on today's agenda, and they all meet legal approval.
Thank you, sir. And do any commissioners have any disclosures for any item on our agenda today?
I have none, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
And I have none, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
And I have none. Next item is our citizen or organizational comments. If there's anyone in the room or anyone online who would like to address the board regarding any item that is not on the consent or regular agenda, please feel free to come forward to the lectern or to raise your hand. Seeing no one in the room, I will ask Ms. Dunning, do we have anyone online who would like to address the board?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no hands raised.
Very well, thank you. Move this on to item number three, our consent agenda. Is there anyone online or in the room who would like to address the board regarding any item on the consent agenda? Seeing no one in the room? Ms. Dunning, anyone online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do not see any hands raised.
Very well. And the next two items on our consent agenda, 3A and 3B, are the minutes, approval of minutes for two meetings that Commissioner Leyden was not in attendance for. So he was excused from those, but I'm going to ask that Commissioner Thomas and myself address 3A and 3B first, and then we'll address items 3C to 3R with Commissioner Leyden. Commissioner Thomas?
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve the requests in 3A and 3B of the consent agenda.
I will second that. No further discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. So we will now address items 3C to R of the consent agenda for the board. If there's any consideration?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve the requests in all items C through R of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. I believe I saw Commissioner Leyden's mouth move. I didn't quite hear it, but I believe he did. And he's nodding yes. So the consent agenda, C through R, is approved. We now move to our regular agenda items. First item, 4A, is a resolution in support of Colorado Gives Day in Douglas County on December 8th, 2020, as promoted by the Douglas County Community Foundation. Presenting for staff, Special Projects Manager Tina Deal.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tina Deal, representing Community Development. The request before you today is to approve the resolution proclaiming December 8th as Colorado Gives Day in Douglas County. The purpose of the resolution is to celebrate philanthropy and highlight the importance of giving to local organizations. The Douglas County Community Foundation has spearheaded the local effort to implement Colorado Gives Day in Douglas County. We have a guest today that would like to give a short presentation. I'd like to introduce Susan Squire, Vice Chair of Douglas County Community Foundation and former Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Lontree. She'll be talking about the importance of Colorado Gives Day, especially in Douglas County, and why it's so important to give locally. Unfortunately, we had a video prepared to show you, but it is not supported by WebEx, so we are not able to show that to you today, but we have a lovely presentation by Ms. Squire, and as soon as she has completed her part of the presentation, I'll offer staff's recommendation for the VCC's consideration to complete our presentation today. Thank you.
We apologize, Renata. We'll have the video, but we know Ms. Squire is of many talents, so I bet she could act that out for us. Ms. Squire, would you mind providing your name and spelling your last name and your address for the record, please? Nice to see you.
Yes, this is Susan Squire, S-Q-U-Y-E-R. I live at 9342 Meredith Court in Lontree, and I am Vice Chair of the Douglas County Community Foundation.
Thank you.
So greetings to each of you, and to Abe. I have you over in the corner of my eye. I have to say, it's the first public meeting that I've been to in many, many months, so it's kind of nice to be out again. Abe, I want to offer continued prayers for you and your family in loss, in honor of the loss of your loved one. Laura, I'd like to congratulate you on your reelection, second term. And Roger, I'd like to congratulate you for winning the Distinguished Service Award from CCI. We served before on other boards together, and I know firsthand what a quality and thoughtful contributor you always are to your deliberations, so thank you. Thank you, Tina, for the introduction today, and thank you, Commissioners, for making time on your agenda. For a special word about the 2020 Colorado Gives Day on December 8th this year, it's today. 2020 has changed so many things for all of us, but what hasn't really changed is the importance of each of us helping one another. I'm assuming Abe can see me this way. Okay. 2020 has really proven that need knows no borders. I think our residents became acutely aware when the COVID virus appeared and businesses closed and people became unemployed. 2020 has also opened our eyes and our pocketbooks. It helped to really broaden the visibility of our local nonprofits and brought home the messages that they are the cornerstone of our community. And people responded by stepping up and giving generously to our local nonprofits that serve our neighbors. So why am I here today? Because it's the mission of the Douglas County Community Foundation as the regional champion on Colorado Gives Day to tell the meaningful stories that inspire generosity. Our work through the DC Gives Program expands the visibility of our locally grown nonprofits that focus on the betterment of all in our community. Over 40 Douglas County nonprofits are represented by the Community Foundation on Colorado Gives Day, and we're keenly aware of the struggles that they are experiencing, from how they do their business, to how they can serve their constituents, and to how they've had to pivot this year to really raise funds and oftentimes even having to cancel their major fundraisers through the year. The struggle makes giving on Colorado Gives Day even more important this year, and participating on Colorado Gives Day helps to give these nonprofits access to incentive funds provided by First Bank on this day. So here's where I wanted to share a special video with you that we produced this year. Our Communications Committee has a diverse number of talented people on it, and we are blessed with a member that is in video production. And so she actually went out and interviewed about 15 of the Douglas County nonprofits that are part of our program and asked each of them to speak about the needs that they address in Douglas County, because we talked so often that it's not just people in need, it's also supporting the cultural assets and the environmental assets that we have that make this such an important place to live. And so hopefully, you can maybe repost at least the link to that video on your website, because it's very heartwarming to hear their messages. The important thing is that that video really paints a real picture of the diversity of the needs and programs. So the good news is that over the last several years, as we've met with you annually, the amount of dollars given by Douglas County residents to our Douglas County nonprofits is increasing. I want to share a few statistics. In 2019, Douglas County residents donated nearly $3.3 million to Colorado nonprofits on Colorado Gives Day. 1.5 million of that was given locally to Douglas County nonprofits. It was a 23% increase in local support from the previous year. Our messaging and your support is working. We're hoping, of course, for even better results this year as the needs are even greater. Our call to action, we've garnered the continued support of all the local municipalities in Douglas County in using their social media tools to really help raise awareness of Douglas County gives and giving where you live on this day. A press release and a digital media kit and talking points was shared in early November with all the participating municipalities and PIOs, and I'm confident that Wendy has been sharing those messages. In addition, the annual Douglas County Giving Guide was produced in cooperation with our DC Gives Program, with the Douglas County Community Foundation, and with the help of Colorado Community Media, and that insert dropped in everyone's local paper one week ago today. I hope you had a chance to take a look. Each municipality, in addition, has passed either a resolution or a proclamation to support Colorado Gives Day for Douglas County, and I want to thank you for your consideration of the same today. These efforts have clearly been making a difference, and we thank you for helping to inspire others to give where you live. I went online and made my donations earlier today and had such a warm feeling personally and a deeper sense of gratitude and respect for the work that each of our volunteer nonprofits do. Great news is there are still 10 hours yet to give where you live on Colorado Gives Day. Thank you very much for your consideration and your continued support. Are there any questions? Comments?
Wonderful presentation, Susan. Thank you. Pro Tem.
Yeah.
Susan Squire, yes.
Susan, thanks. Thank you for your important message. We know, especially this year, that there are a lot of people who are hurting and in need, and I encourage everyone to give locally and give where you live and help those help your neighbors. So thank you for your message.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, I would just echo those sentiments, and certainly it's clear that former Mayor Pro Tem, you're familiar with this format, and your presentation was fantastic. We appreciate the notion of giving where you live and all of the leadership and effort that you have put into this community, along with your colleagues, to ensure that Douglas County remains a place of philanthropy where people are generous. No doubt, we've seen some significant need as a result of so many closures and people losing their jobs and their livelihoods. So now more than ever, we're hoping that people continue to give right here in Douglas County. So thank you for that excellent presentation.
Mayor Pro Tem, Squire, as you continue to give in public service, and in this way, it's wonderful. You always put it so well, and thank you for continuing to stay involved, because you have a strong voice and everlasting effort. You're like the ever-early bunny when it comes to this. You do a great job. Thank you, because you certainly motivate many of us, and hopefully more who hear this today will be motivated. I really appreciate you bringing this forward, and it's, you know, no doubt, every year we say it's a great need, but there's, I don't think there is anyone who doesn't understand the need today. So we just hope and pray that everybody has that in their heart to continue to give and help those in need.
Thank you very much for your time.
You bet. Thank you. This time, Tina, we do have a resolution before us. Would you like to read that resolution?
Certainly.
Very well.
In support of Colorado Gives Day in Douglas County on December 8th, 2020, as promoted by the Douglas County Community Foundation. Whereas the Douglas County Community Foundation is dedicated to inspiring generosity, supporting local nonprofits, and champions awareness of hidden local needs, and whereas the Douglas County Community Foundation is matching donors with effective local nonprofits focused on improving the quality of life for Douglas County citizens, and whereas Douglas County Gives Day is an annual statewide movement to celebrate philanthropy and increase online giving, and whereas Colorado Gives Day is the largest day of philanthropic, philanthrop- philanthropic giving in the state, and whereas Douglas County Gives Day, or excuse me, Colorado Gives Day promotes a 24-hour period to give where you live, and whereas Coloradans are encouraged to participate in Colorado Gives Day because all donations make a difference to nonprofits working to improve the quality of life in our communities, now and therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County supports local philanthropic giving and proclaims December 8th, 2020, as Colorado Gives Day in Douglas County.
Thank you, Tina. Tina, do you have anything else to offer the board this time?
Our, the last part of our presentation would just be to encourage you to approve our request to make this Colorado Gives Day in Douglas County.
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation.
This time, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience or online who would like to address the board regarding Colorado Gives Day. Seeing no one in the room, Ms. Dunning, anyone online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I see no hands raised.
Very well. I turn it back to the Commissioners for additional comments or any questions.
Mr. Chair, if there are no additional comments or discussion, I have a motion to approve a resolution in support of Colorado Gives Day in Douglas County on December 8th, 2020, as promoted by the Douglas County Community Foundation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, state aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. And I'll just make a comment, you know, not only is it that, you know, the nonprofits receive this, there's a lot of work by the nonprofits that they provide to those in need, so we really want to give a hand out, a hand of applause to the nonprofits for all the volunteer work that they do to provide for the, those in need and to create a great safety net in Douglas County. Our next item on the agenda, 4B, is funding recommendations for developmental disabilities and male levy grant applications. Tina, can you check your microphone?
Is it on? Okay, thank you. The request before you today is to consider and approve the developmental disabilities male levy grant recommendations for 2020 funding. Douglas County citizens approved a one-mill property tax in November 2001 to benefit residents with intellectual or developmental disabilities, or ADD. Historically, the county has distributed 94.5% of the funds to the, to developmental pathways, which is the state-designated community-centered board for Douglas County. The remaining 5.5% is retained by the county to distribute through a competitive grant process. An advisory council reviews the applications submitted by the organization serving people with ADD. Forty applications were submitted, and the request totaled $1,052,996. The council members used established criteria and a weighted evaluation tool to develop funding recommendations for the Board of County Commissioners' consideration. This year, the budget for competitive grants is $400,000. It includes $100,000 in male levy proceeds that were returned from developmental pathways to distribute through the competitive grant program. The advisory council recommends funding 32 awards to 26 agencies for a wide range of services and programming. The recommendations can be categorized into five groups. The following slides show the individual organizations by category, a short program description, and the funding awards recommended. The five awards listed first here are under the equipment category and will help organizations adapt to COVID restrictions in accordance with the public health orders and to pivot to online services. The five respite and adult day awards will provide program support and scholarships to help families struggling to obtain needed services for loved ones. The eight awards under the category of socialization skills and personal development will provide vocational training, fitness opportunities, and financial education. The seven therapeutic services awards, such as horse riding, recreation, and swimming lessons, will help people with ADD develop coordination, balance, and further their The seven transportation program awards will provide access to adult day services, medical appointments, and employment. It is staff's recommendation that the VCC approve the 2020 developmental disabilities male levy grant awards that are recommended by the advisory council. This concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Tina. Questions for Tina from staff, Commissioners?
I have none, thank you.
And I have none, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Tina, would you happen to have the list of the advisory council, and if you would have that, would you be able to read off those who contributed?
Sure. That's a great idea. Thank you. Carol Compost, Jenny Skinner, John Groom, who is here with us today, Toni McGray Couch, Deborah Roll, and Said Siliqui are the council members.
And from staff?
Staff is Jennifer Eby, Melanie Grothie, and myself, and we've also had really good support from the finance department, from Ashley Pate.
Thank you. This time, I'll open it up for anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, and we have a couple of members from the audience, so please feel free to come forward to the lectern. And I may ask if you would mind stating your name, spelling of your last name, and your address for the record, please.
My name is John Groom, like I bride and groom, G-R-O-O-M. I've been involved with the development disabilities for, since about 1991, not totally in Colorado, but I got involved, I got involved when my wife and I moved to California, working with the Special Olympics and with an organization called Sybatan International. One of the things that I was very supportive of was when the issue of putting the development disability tax on the ballot, I was extremely pleased. Why? Because there's a tremendous need, and one of the things that I don't think enough of us understand is the need for more assistance with the development of the disabled. I was not on it the first year, but I've been on it ever since then, and I thoroughly enjoy it. One of the things that always impresses me is I always learn something, and I think that's important as we go through life. And I thank the Commissioners for their support of this program and hope to see it continue for many, many more years.
Thank you, Mr. Groom, and thank you so much for your service.
My name is Ken Zeal. Last name is Z is in zebra, I-E-L, and I live at 1672 Diamond Head Drive here in Castle Rock. I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments. One, I want to thank the citizens of Douglas County for their vision 20 years ago to vote in this mill levy, which has provided, as John mentioned, untold value to the, to this population. My wife and I are not only parents of a son with developmental disabilities, but we are founders of High Point Services, who over the last 15 years have served about over 500 children and adults with developmental disabilities. And I wanted to thank the, certainly the committee that I used to be a member of years ago for approving these, that have reviewed well over hundreds and hundreds of applications. And there's many, many wonderful providers, and the citizens of Douglas County could be proud of the way the money's being spent and the quality of the agencies that are providing those services. And certainly, I want to thank the Commissioners over the years who have provided feedback and support for what we're doing. The challenge that we now have in the state of Colorado is not only a budget crisis that's affecting the state, but it's affecting programs like ours in a very significant way. In fact, just this past week and a half or so, the state has had to make further cuts on programming like ours, which will probably reduce funding by nearly 25 to 30% for many agencies, and the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we are amongst the lowest-paid program provider-type agencies in the state to begin with. So the male levy money comes at a very opportune time to support us, and we continue just, you know, pray certainly for the leadership in this county, for people like Tina and John, who I've got to know over the years, and they're just wonderful people, very committed. So I just wanted to give thanks and appreciation to the leadership of this county and to its particular citizens over the last 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zeal, and thank you what you've done through the years and what you continue to do, provide a great service. Wonderful job. We have an additional speaker?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, everyone.
Would you mind stating your name, spelling of your last name, and address for the record, please?
Yes, please. My name is Howard Deco. My address is 22822 East Union Circle, Aurora 80015. Good afternoon again. Compassion Adult Day Care, we thank you and everyone for giving us the opportunity to apply for mill levy funding for a vehicle to transport client to and from our daycare. I'm so glad that I was part of this program to provide services to Douglas County residents. Thank you so much, everyone, again. Thank you, Tina, and thank you for your team. Thank you.
You're very welcome, and thank you for your service, too. We really appreciate you and your input.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else in the room. Ms. Dunning, anyone online?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to call first on Mary Colton. Mary, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your first and last name and address. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Mary Colton. My address is 9926 West Baden Drive, Littleton, Colorado, 80127. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Tina. Thank you for hosting this meeting today. I am the Parks and Recreation Director for the Town of Parker. I wanted to introduce with me today to Denny Jacobs, who is our Individuals with Disabilities Coordinator. We are here today to primarily just say thank you for the opportunity to apply for this grant year after year. I arrived in Parker about 14 years ago, and we didn't have a program, and it was a glaring deficiency in our service provision. And about a year later, I implemented an Individuals with Disabilities program for the town, and since then, I mean, that was back when we started with only about six other entities vying for funding assistance for this program. And since then, we've come a long way. We have a full-time person now dedicated exclusively to individuals with disabilities. We've offered thousands of scholarships to folks who want to come in and utilize our facilities, our gymnasium, our pool, our fitness equipment. You know, we have those facilities that will allow for participation, so we've been very successful with that. And also with adaptive swim lessons, which have been very popular, and as most of you can appreciate, a very important life safety aspect for, for all of us, actually. So we're quite proud of the program. So we're quite proud of the program we've developed here, but it's been only made possible through this funding assistance. And I think that, you know, a lot of people in Douglas County, this extends well beyond the Town of Parker, we don't turn anyone away. So we've been very fortunate to be the recipient of this funding over the years, so thank you all for consideration year after year for supporting us and the Town of Parker to be able to continue to do this. We're grateful. We continue to improve upon our program each year and our services each year, and Denny and her staff of part-time fitness instructors, as well as lifeguards and swim instructors who help these folks improve their quality of life, and that's what it's all about for us, is helping everyone have access and the ability, and helping them improve their lives. And so we think we've been successful with that, but there's always room for improvement and to extend that and expand that, you know, beyond. So each year, we look at ways to continue to do that. So thank you so much for your time today and for the opportunity to present to all of you, and once again, you know, for the continued excellent work that everybody is doing for this cause. It's very near and dear to our hearts, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colton, and thank you for serving the Parker area.
Thank you.
Commissioner, this is Troy, your host. I have another speaker, that would be Michelle Sosa Mallory. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
There you go. Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. I think I might be... Just a little bit. I'm echoing. Can you still hear me?
Speaker down a little, Michelle.
Michelle, yes.
Hello.
We can hear you.
Hello, we can...
Yes, go ahead, try again.
I can't hear on my end, so maybe I can try and remedy that and come back.
We can hear you. If you would like to go ahead, I'm trying to give you a thumbs up if you can tell we can hear you.
All right, this is your host. I'll come back to Michelle shortly. Let's move on to Blair Wiles. Go ahead and unmute.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Blair Wiles, W-Y-L-E-S. I live at 2337 Meadow Green Circle, Franktown, and I am here representing Promise Ranch Therapeutic Writing. I've been on the Board of Directors for Promise Ranch since 2011, and been involved in the program since 2009, directly as a father of a 25-year-old son with autism, and I wanted to introduce you to him. He's a little upset right now, but I wanted you to be able to see firsthand the type of people that the mill levy helps support. So I'll just briefly introduce you to my son, Daniel, and then move away. So I just wanted to thank Douglas County, Tina, for so many years that Promise Ranch has benefited from the Douglas County Mill Levy Grant Program and for the direct benefits that I see through not only being involved with Promise Ranch, but also as a father of an individual that benefits from that. So thank you to Douglas County, the Board of County Commissioners, and to Tina. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Wiles.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to go on to Michael Kilgore. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you, Tina. My name is Michael Kilgore, K-I-L-G-O-R-E. I live at 2645 South Wadsworth Boulevard in Lakewood, 80227. I'm representing today Financial Health Institute, and particularly the Resourceability Program. I'm the Director of Operations and Program Delivery for Financial Health Institute, and we were very happy to receive funding last year and to use for this year that we just finished up. And again, thank you for the endorsement for our programming for 2021. We worked specifically this year with the Douglas County School Bridge Program, delivering 10 funded classes and additional more that we contributed with an average of 11 students in each class, so that's over, well, exactly 154 multiple touches. The topic was transitional skills, having to do with employment and then financial health, financial management, and financial choices. And so we are very proud to be part of what's happening with this community. We have been working in the Denver community with the mill levy funding there for the last three years. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Board Members, Commissioners, Tina and your team. We appreciate the participation ability and the collaboration with the other agencies. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore.
Michelle Sosa Mallory, let's try yours again. Go ahead and unmute, see if it works now. Nope, I guess not. All right, we'll try to come back to you again. Let's move on to Suzanne Op. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm going to give this a try. Please let me know if I'm echoing. I'm going to turn my speakers down. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're fine.
Great. So I also am here on behalf of Promise Ranch. I'm the President of the Board of Directors, and I'm also an instructor at the Center for Promise Ranch Therapeutic Writing. And I'm here today on behalf of not only the students and the clients who we serve, like Blair's son, but on behalf of all the horses that we support out there and who help us do our amazing work every day. And we just want to thank you. We just want to thank all of you for your consideration every year, again, echoing what many of the nonprofits have brought forward. The fact that Douglas County has made it such a priority to support nonprofits and other organizations in this way just makes me proud to live here. And I forgot to mention my address, but I'm, again, Suzanne Op, O-P-P, and I live at 2807 Haystack Road. And if you don't yet have a recipient for your Colorado Gives donations today, go to prtr.org, and if you'd like to support us, we'd love to have that. But thank you all for everything that you have gone through in terms of the evaluations of all of these very, very important causes.
You're welcome, and thank you, Ms. Op.
I'm going to go to a call-in person now. This would be Julia. Julia, you're unmuted, go ahead. Please state your first and last name, spelling your last name and address.
My name is Julia McConaughey, M-C-C-O-N-N-A-U-G-H-E-Y. I live at 35 North Carlton Street here in Castle Rock, up in Founders. I'm here representing Special Olympics Colorado and just wanting to say a huge thank you for continued support that you've provided us over the years and continue to provide to us. We serve more than 1,000 children, youth, and adults with intellectual disabilities throughout Douglas County, and we're in over 25 schools currently and implementing unified recreation where athletes with and without disabilities can participate in a gym class together and doing inclusive youth leadership. So we have a lot of school programming from the young kids all the way up to older adults, and I just can't thank you for the continued support. And our athletes here in Douglas County are some of the most active statewide, so the dollars you provide us is so appreciative and goes such a long way here. So again, just a big thank you, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Ms. McConaughey.
Thank you, Commissioner. And finally, we will go back to Michelle Sosa Mallory and see if we can get some audio. Go ahead, Michelle.
All right, I'm back.
Sounds good.
Hello, again, sorry for the technical difficulties. So I'm here on, my name is Michelle Sosa Mallory of the Lone Tree Arts Center. My address is 564 Old Stone Drive. And I am here just to say thank you on behalf of the Lone Tree Arts Center and the City of Lone Tree. We extend our sincere thank you for your continued support through Douglas County Developmental Disabilities Mill Levy Grant Program. The work we do to engage children and adults with developmental disabilities always has been and always be, will be a core service to our community, even in a pandemic year. While we have continued to shift plans and accept adaptive programming these last 10 months, our commitment remains unshakable to those who are often isolated from being a part of the arts. In coming months, we might continue to be virtual, or we might need to keep our in-person audiences to a minimum. However, we look forward to welcoming these beloved patrons as we always have. We know that funding decisions were difficult this year with so much need in Douglas County, and because of this, we are especially grateful for this support and for your trust in us to be good stewards of public funding. Thank you so much, Commissioners and Tina, for all your help.
Thank you, Ms. Sosa Mallory. Appreciate it. Thank you for hanging with us.
Commissioner, I have...
No problem, thank you.
Commissioner, I have one more call-in user, that'll be Hannah. Hannah, I have unmuted you, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Hannah Lofland, L-O-F-L-A-N-D, 6671 Wakanda Drive, Perry Park, Colorado. And I just want to say a humble thank you for even being considered for the mill levy grant. We are a young company, one that's been volunteering for about nine years, and now we've been serving over 200 Douglas County residents. As the mother of a 17-year-old severely autistic teenager, the need in Douglas County is so, so great to provide them with a stable environment, to be able to introduce them into the community, to provide them classrooms with their peers, be able to work on communication and life skills that the schools just can't provide. We are extremely grateful to even be considered, and we are honored that you would consider to be able to fund our autism village, which will provide a safe, secure place for children like my son and others in Douglas County, so that families won't have to worry as we age what will happen to our children and who will love them the same way that we do. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts for even considering us as part of the mill levy grant.
You're welcome, and thank you, Ms. Lofland. Troy, anyone else?
I have no other hands raised, Commissioner.
Very well, and I don't believe we have anyone else in the room. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I'll now bring it back to the Board. Is there any further comments, questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Partridge. I think it was clear in listening to everybody who spoke just now about the need that this mill levy funding supports, and I don't know if it supports a tenth of the need or 50% of the need, but we know that the need out there is great, and we appreciate all of you who took the time to share with us how important this funding is for you and your families and your personal satisfaction. So thank you, and God bless to all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Layden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm incredibly honored to have heard from so many in the developmental disabilities arenas that have just provided so much wonderful care for people that are in this position. And I especially want to thank Mr. Wiley for sharing Daniel with us, and I hope he has a good day today. We know that not only is it important to care for those with developmental disabilities, but also to care for the caretakers and all of you out there that are providing services for people that are challenged by developmental disabilities. We appreciate you so much, especially this year. We know it's been double, if not triple, the work that you've had to take on. So we just thank you for spending your time with us today, and it's an honor to partner with you.
Thank you, Commissioner Layden, and how interesting that you appear to be in the Capital Rotunda with the picture behind you. I'm going to just thank everyone who is involved, and first of all, I want to thank the residents of Douglas County. It was in 2001, a voter approved one mill mill levy that goes to developmental disability. So really thank the voters for approving that, because it really has made a difference. Obviously, we heard that today. We continue to hear that, and it's wonderful to see that a disability has turned into an ability, and it just makes such a difference for our community. And though it's only stretched in our community, it stretches out to the many communities in Colorado and many, probably even other states. So thank you all for all you do and continue to do for those who are in need. Appreciate you all. It's time, I'll bring it back to the Board.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion to approve funding recommendations for developmental disabilities mill levy grant applications.
Second. We have a motion and a second, but no further discussion? All in favor, state aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, and congratulations again to everyone. Mr. DeBoard, any other business?
No other business.
Thank you, sir. And County Manager Report was enclosed, and I'll ask for Commissioner comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Partridge. Item O that we approved on the agenda today is about our parks fee schedule. And, you know, we're all used to government raising fees all the time. Well, this time, the fees were lowered. Our staff knows that we just really want to supply government-funded amenities that just pay their own way, nothing more, and I don't even know if these fees are going to pay for the use of these events. But just to point out, if any of you have seen the new amphitheater that was just completed at Highlands Heritage Park in Highlands Ranch at Lincoln in Quebec, right now, it costs $1,210 to rent that facility, but next year, it's only going to cost $141, actually $140 a day, and if you just want it for four hours, it will only cost $70. So I want to point out that staff came to us with this. We didn't go to staff and say, make it happen. They figured out where they could save some money for our citizens using these events, so hats off to our park staff, and I encourage you to go to item O in the agenda to see the entire schedule. Thank you, Commissioner Partridge.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Layden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, no doubt, these are difficult times, and we've said throughout this year that it is a marathon, not a sprint, but I am so encouraged as one commissioner, and I know my colleagues share this perspective, that perhaps the finish line is in sight. I am in Washington, DC right now, the work continues, and today was a vaccine summit really provided to the people of the United States through Operation Warp Speed, which is truly an unprecedented delivery of vaccines to the people of this country through the efforts of so many. And I really want to thank those that have been working so hard on a national level to deliver this, all the way down to the state and local level. I feel very honored and very grateful and humbled by the hard work of our county staff to really get up to speed so quickly in terms of expertise, to ensure that testing is available, and that even just as recently as the fourth, there was a convalescent plasma drive. And I want to thank Commissioner Thomas for her participation and support of that, helping to ensure that individuals who are hospitalized get the care that they need and can get out of the hospital. So just want to continue to thank everyone, and more good news is on the way. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Layden. Now, I would add, during these times, there's always information available, and I just want to point out through the county website, the douglas.co.us, there is a wealth of information, whether you're looking for a testing site, whether you're just looking for... whether you're just looking for additional information regarding county services, no doubt. But also to the point, especially the funding. Commissioners have put $15 million of the CARES funding toward restaurants and the event services businesses that are drastically being hindered right at this time. So not only do we ask if you can continue to support them, but please go to the website to gather all sorts of information on there. And if there's any question, please feel free to call the county for that additional information. That concludes our business meeting. We are adjourned.